This conference will now be recorded.
The total is version.
It's a lot more than it's given, it's already the finest.
I just gotta make sure that food, I know those two will show up.
You mean after? Oh yeah, we got one. Oh, it's there.
I didn't do it.
Alex was supposed to be here, I saved you a piece.
Thanks.
How's it going?
Good, how are you doing?
Alright, guys, you think after a while they go around school?
There's no water really.
Was it just frozen? Or was there?
I'm not sure yet, it was a... I think like a school bus out there, he's awesome. Ice and stuff, and just made this mud out of it. Everybody assumed it was water coming out. And so I had to go back from Peckham Lake, or not Peckham, Georgetown Lake, because that's up, it shouldn't be a big thing.
Yeah, we will. We'll probably, are you ready? Okay, well, I was making sure you were ready to... Okay. Okay, hello everyone, we're gonna go ahead and call this to order. I was waiting for one more person, and hopefully he shows up, Alex, our planning, our county planning board guy. Can we have everyone identify yourselves? I can't see them.
Halverson is the last. I think, I think we just need the callers to identify themselves, who's ever on.
What are we missing?
The one in the bottom left.
Caller 00, can you identify yourself please, just so we know who's on?
Brett Tetchbury.
Thank you.
And we got everyone else.
This is Justin Hauser as well with Brett.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm gonna turn my microphone off for now.
Yes, please.
We've got Matt 4 with 4 Halverson Architects.
Thank you.
Joe Finley with Summit and Sky.
Awesome, thank you. Matt? Where's Melissa? Art, why don't you go ahead, come on and...
Alright, can everybody hear me? And now.
Okay, there you go, go ahead Art.
Alright, I got... Alright, tonight we have the project. I call the first one, My Willow. The second one is Mr. Thornberry's group.
Oh, I just...
Finley's group. I think Brienne Johnson is, I see. Brienne, if you'll unmute, I'll let you start first. But just as an introduction, the My Willow is on block 2 of the North 40, Phase 6. The Thornsbury group is on block 3 of the North 40, and Mr. Finley's group is block 1, 4, and 6. All on Phase 6 of the North 40 development. You all should have some documentation. You know, Mr. Finley, you got me some stuff a little bit late, I have not shared all of it, I did share the two that I got this morning. Hopefully everybody's got that, I'll let each person... The first and second presentations are traditional neighborhood developments. And that means that you guys acting as the council, set all the requirements for setback density. And Mr. Finley's group, I'm a little less familiar with, but it appears that on those blocks, they were changed to residential town density back in August, at Josh's request, and I know Josh is somewhere on the, on the board here tonight. That was blocks 4 and 6 were changed from the core commercial residential to residential town density, which only grants 8 dwelling units per acre. So for Mr. Finley's group, they're gonna want to have a zoning and a density variant done on that, so that's gonna be a little bit different for you guys. And obviously, you're not gonna be able to vote on that by Thursday night, nor, given the amount of feedback that I've gotten over the last few days, I would, I would say, it doesn't look like you guys are gonna actually get to vote on this on Thursday, it was wishful thinking on my part. But Brienne, if you'll start for the My Willow LLC group, the floor is yours.
Thank you Art, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we have submitted our zone site permit application. This is block 2 of the North 40 subdivision. It is one lot. It is 1.5 acres total size, it is res, it is zoned as a commercial residential. The planned development described in the package that was provided to you consists of 3 condos with 4 units per condo. So there's gonna be a total of 12 units. The covenants for the property dictate 8 units per acre. So the density in regard to the covenants that bind the property is correct for 12 units. And if I'm interpreting your zoning code correctly, the core commercial residential has an 8 unit per acre density level. So I think we're consistent between the residential, or excuse me, the zoning density, as well as the North 40 covenants density. There are just some specifics particular to this project. We do have it planned for a 6-inch sewer service line that will be running from each of the 3 buildings. I was also understanding that there was some concern on the part of the town about being able to properly meter and monitor water usage. So we have designed it specifically with 12 water service meters, so 1 water service meter per individual unit. There'll be 4 service meters located in the mechanical room of each of the condo buildings. And that the town, whoever the, the manager is for the town, will be able to have access to those mechanical rooms if needed to monitor, and if there's a situation of non-payment, to cut those meters off. Another thing that we had specified, again, that we believed was a desire of the town, was to keep the lot intact as 1 1.5 acre lot. And I also believe that in addition to the zoning of this as core commercial residential, it has the traditional neighborhood development overlay. We have tried to make sure that the parameters of our planned development are within the zoning and the overlay district requirements. And if you have specifics on the nature of the design of the buildings or the parameters, I do believe we also have our architect Jackie Ball attending this meeting if the council has any questions there. That is my overview, if you have specific questions, please go ahead.
Thank you Brienne, I guess my first question is, and Alex Hoogle, the Madison County Planning Director, just joined us here in the office, is that if these are going to be condos, and Alex, is whether or not they need to go through the county subdivision process and the town subdivision process? Is that correct, Alex?
Well, I kinda came in a little late, so I don't know all your particulars on that, but I'd actually prepare a little bit of material for you to think about. There is a determination that could be made by Art regarding the applicability of particular zone. For instance, Montana Codex 763203, I brought copies for you all, actually provides an exemption for certain condominiums. What it says is that, in short, condominiums and some townhouses or conversions as defined in 7023102, constructed on land subdivided in compliance with Parts 5 and 6 of the chapter, on lots within incorporated cities and towns, are exempt from the provisions of the chapter if either the original subdivision of land expressly contemplated the construction of those condominiums, or number 2, the condominium, town home, or townhouse proposal is in conformance with applicable local zoning. And the way that gets translated is that if you have a zoning, for instance, that contemplates a particular zone that contemplates single-family residence or multifamily residence, it could be interpreted that, that, and the condominiums are, otherwise are in compliance with your zoning, it could be contemplated that they're allowable, and they simply have to meet your permitting requirements for the town, as applicable, things like water and sewer connection, and the various permits that are applicable to your town, but don't necessarily require review as a subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Kelly, what are your thoughts on water and sewer and the 6-inch service line for those 3 buildings?
Michael Sprout and I sat in this same room with Brienne on the telephone, and Michael told me that he was gonna put together, or him and Brienne were gonna put together, an agreement, and I haven't seen that happen yet, so I don't, I don't, I don't know where we're at there, Brienne.
I'm sorry, can you stop the agreement you're referring to?
Can you move the microphone closer to you too, Kelly?
Oh, that's...
Yeah, you can sit there, she's not here.
So anyway, Brienne, Michael Sprout and I sat in this same room and talked, or he talked with you on the phone about an agreement, because I had some concerns, and at that time, he was saying, no, it's not a condominium. Anyway, I'm not worried about that, but as far as water and sewer, we talked about 3 different hookups, and we talked about several different things, and he asked you, I was sitting here, and he asked you to write up an agreement, I haven't seen such an agreement.
I'm sorry, I do not recall this conversation. So this was an agreement for the specifics of the sewer and water?
That's correct, because what he talked about, and I thought you were listening to the conversation, what he talked about was agreeable, but I see no plans, and without, without this agreement, then I think we might need a mechanical engineer to drop things up for us, so we know exactly what's going on.
So you need an agreement that specifies the exact parameters of the sewer and water service to the property, is that correct?
That's what the 3 of us talked about in the same room, I don't know if you know. I didn't talk to you, he was on the phone with you.
Okay, yeah, I, I am sorry that that conversation did not translate apparently, but I will reconnect with Michael on that. So would this be something that would be a condition of approval of this application then?
Yeah, for sure, because yes, it would be, because if he... It sounded like we had a pretty good agreement, but if, if there isn't a written document saying that we agree with this, then I would say you'll, you'll need to get a mechanical engineer to to write up the, what's actually gonna happen. He led me to believe there's 3 water services out there, I'm not sure there is, I can only see 2.
Okay, I will reconnect with him on that.
Okay, one other thing, if he's gonna do the construction, he needs to be bonded. And I, he probably is, I don't know, but that's a condition the town has also.
Any other questions or concerns?
We're just going over a couple of our, with our zoning here, conditional...
So it's in 113C-2, so multifamily dwellings are listed as a conditional use. So we will need to go through the conditional use application to do that. And then also, my one concern was the parking. I'll try to pull up our parking ordinance on how much parking is required. Let me see if I can pull up the exact page, because I see that it's 1 garage place, a space plus 1 parking spot immediately behind the garage, and then it looks like 6 additional spaces. So you have essentially, well, I guess, surface spaces, you have 18 spaces per 12 units. We've kind of defined that, not a lot of people park in their garage, and what kind of storage facilities are gonna be available for folks for their, you know, because living in a high recreational area, everyone's got a boat, everyone's got a bike, or a horse trailer, or something along those lines, and how you plan on dealing with this extra vehicles, because currently, there's no street parking on Otis Lane.
Okay, and so in addition to addressing storage, is there, am I getting the sense that you would require additional parking spaces to be developed on the lot, or?
Yeah, let me, I'm trying to find her...
How many spaces do you have there for the 12 units, is it the 18 that she said, or?
Yes, it's 18.
Okay. Art, does she meet the parking requirements there with the 18?
I don't know, I didn't do the math on it. I would do the math when I work it up. There's, there's specific in the code, residential, I, I don't, I did not bring my code home with me, unfortunately. But there's specific parking numbers, it's just a simple arithmetic. And I'm not sure per, it'll be per dwelling unit on residential. I'm gonna guess it 1.5 to 2.5 parking spots, plus Title 25 will require a handicap spot per, I think it's 18 normal parking spots, or 10, you need a handicap spot. So parking would be something for you guys to send back to me, to work up, and then make it a condition of, is that they meet all minimum parking standards. The storage, that's on, you know, if you guys want storage, that's, that's a different kettle of fish from a zoning administrator's standpoint, whatever you guys, because this is a traditional neighborhood overlay, I did not give you it as a conditional use, Lisa, because the conditional use basically means you get to look at it further. And by overlaying it with traditional neighborhood development, you're kinda doing the same thing twice, if you look at it for conditional use as well, because you have the right, under the traditional neighborhood development, to pretty much do whatever you want, within legal reason. So that's why you didn't get it as a conditional use as well, because I think you're doing the same thing twice. If you allow the building, then you, by, our code has permitted use and conditional use, and under the term conditional use, it actually says, conditional use is the permitted use with a little extra scrutiny by the council. And I think you're getting that little extra scrutiny by the council in the traditional neighborhood development, so I didn't double up on it.
And just so we're clear too, there is storage within each unit? If you look at the plant, the floor plans on the first floor, you'll see that the mechanical room also includes storage?
Brienne, do you have an estimate on how much square footage of storage is, or within that?
I'm gonna defer to Jackie on that question.
Yeah, I, I don't know an exact number off the top of my head, but I'm gonna say that, you know, that first floor that has the garage, they are oversized garage, thinking that some storage happens in there. And then the back area that's labeled storage and mechanical, it's just because we haven't defined exactly the amount of space that we need for mechanical. But the purpose is that it gets subdivided, the remainder space for the tenants, I think we've all lived in apartments, and know that you need storage. So that was the goal there, and I mean, I'm not exactly sure on the square footage, but we were trying to basically get a little storage unit for each, for each unit.
And then also, let's see, what other questions did I have? Looking at, do you have a landscaping plan as well, I see you have trees on your, on your mock-up, but do you have a landscaping plan, or are those just added in to the picture?
Yes, not, so not at this point, we don't have a landscape person, we intend to as we further develop, but but not at this point, we're just wanting to make sure that this is feasible before we move forward with that.
And how tall are these buildings?
39 feet.
And then I also see on the sidewalk that you have on the western edge that connects, that sidewalk really doesn't, isn't able to access those units, if that makes sense? Like it just, it just runs along the edge of the property as opposed to be incorporated into being usable for those, because they're gonna end up cutting across the grass, or still having to, is there a way to make? Because the whole purpose of the, the North 40 and the core commercial residential district and the traditional neighborhood development is for walkability and stuff like that, so I'm just wondering if there's a way to incorporate better walkability for those units?
I, I think that that could absolutely be considered as we move forward, yeah.
And then do you have examples, I see the color of the outside, do you have examples of what the exteriors will look like? Are they gonna be just one type of siding, or is it gonna be a mixed use of different exterior applications?
Yep, so at this point, we think that we're probably at least 2 materials, just to get that textural relief, and then obviously multiple colors, probably in the white and gray scheme, and different shades of that.
Does anyone else have any questions for her? Are you good? Jason?
I just found the parking, I mean...
Was that DASH? Yeah, I found the parking, I think it's 1.5 for, so that fits with our ordinance, is the 1.5 spaces per residential unit. So, and I guess another question... Brienne, is, are you gonna submit a copy of the covenants as, as far as property maintenance and stuff like that, is the condo association put in? I think just sometimes it really depends on the covenants and what is allowed there, so what can end up happening as far as, you know, outside storage and all that kind of stuff that plays that, you know, can make a really nice development not look great when there's not you know, bylaws to address those types of things?
Yes, there will be covenants associated, there'll be a condo association, essentially with covenant... Yes, there will be covenants associated, there'll be a condo association essentially with covenants. We had not gotten to that point because we wanted to make sure that the initial design review was going to pass scrutiny.
I think all in all, it's, I mean, it's a flawless building in Ennis, but I think all in all, it's a, it's a good project. So I just want to make sure, I know that people are excited to get things done. But I think on our end, as you may know, Ennis is a really small town. We don't have a planning director. We rely on the county to help us out and answer our questions. And so with all of these projects, I would just ask for patience. And I know sometimes that that's hard, but we want to make sure that we are doing this right and doing it correctly. And so if Kelly, our Public Works Director with Water and Sewer, has recommendations and concerns, we want to make sure that all of those are addressed. And so, so I just want to thank you for your patience ahead of time. And thanks for submitting great pictures for us to look at and all the information. So, thank you.
Brienne, hi, this is Jason Schroeder, I have a question. I don't see in the, at least in the renderings here, any curves. What do you plan on doing for like with water runoff? And are you going to have like lower elevation gathering ponds? Or what's your plan for that?
Again, I'm going to defer to Jackie on that.
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that level of design yet. And so that'll be that next level when we bring in a landscape and civil engineer, basically to help us, you know, with stormwater runoff.
But that will be something you guys are going to address, obviously needs.
Yes.
So the sewer and water thing is the, what we need to get taken care of, but is for sure. Well, I'm just talking, oh.
That we do is, my initial thoughts on this was to make the council aware of what I have on my plate. So that's why I allotted this, and it's not the applicant's fault, it's more my fault. I didn't want to specifically, because we weren't ready to do anything on these. But I needed everybody to start thinking about them and asking you questions now so we don't take up two, three hours of time at a, at a regular council meeting when you got the public sitting around just waiting for a council meeting. So this is more of an informational, hello folks, this is what we've got planned. And I think the next stage for all the applicants, if you decide you want them to go to the planning board or not go to the planning board, I think in Brienne's case, it may not be necessary. Alex, you know, if he wants to take a look at it for me, I never mind that at all. But on this one, I would suggest that Brienne and her principals go back to the drawing board, address some of these issues. We reproduce those parking lot, a little bit of landscaping. I also need a lighting design on this. And we get you that package within a few weeks. And then we schedule this for March, on our March meeting. To, and maybe one work session separate than all three of the folks together. We do a work with all of the new inputs that you guys wanted and see how close we are to maybe voting on it in March. Unfortunately, you know, Town Hall got zapped with one of the managers getting COVID. So we got shut down for a week and the January meeting was canceled because of it. Unfortunately, that's the world we live in these days. And, but that would be my suggestion on the first two projects. Well, Mr. Finley is in a little bit different boat because Josh had the blocks four and six changed to residential town density from Core Commercial Residential back in August. So you're going to need a little more, probably Alex at the planning board to take a hard look at that one and make some recommendations to you guys for me.
Okay, let's, just so I can take a step back here and make sure we're, we need the water sewer agreement. It sounds like the parking thing is done or acceptable. The landscaping plan and a more defined building plan. But I'd like Alex to look at that before it comes to us, so he can also, if you don't mind. So you can also look and give us or tell us anything that we might be missing. We don't want to make any mistakes with this. We want this to work well for the town and for you, Brienne and Jackie, to make sure that everyone is in good shape. So I think we need to take a step back and, like Art said, hit all of these things. But then with the conditional use, what do we need?
Well, I think that was just like Art was saying. It, this is kind of funny that it falls into both the traditional neighborhood development and the conditional use. So we can put that condition either through the conditional use permit or through the traditional neighborhood development. And, you know, things that I, I think I brought up, the things that I would like to see is landscaping, a landscaping plan. I think we should also have, this is where maybe a certificate of completion needs to be part of that conditional use too. And so if we can develop that, so make sure that all of the conditions that we do put on it, whether it may be the water sewer or whatever, that they're all completed before these are occupied. And so to make sure all the checklist is done. So, but yeah, the lighting, like Art was saying, so we can get a lighting plan, a landscaping plan. Surface water runoff, if that's part of the landscaping.
Well, I think, Josh, and this meets all of your requirements for the North Forty as well?
I haven't actually seen that, but I can't say one or the other. I do know that, you know, when we did the original subdivision, we did set these all up as condominium lots, because that was the plan when we started everything.
Okay.
Were they going to have like businesses at the bottom and then living above? Something like that?
That was a plan for some of them. And some of them were just going to be straight up, you know, multi-chambered residential.
So any other questions for anyone? Awesome, thank you, Brienne.
I would like to ask, I guess, a follow-up then so that we make sure that we proceed most efficiently and ensure that we address all of the conditions that, or all of the concerns that the town has presented thus far. So I know we fall in this kind of odd place between a conditional use permit and the traditional neighborhood development. Am I hearing that you would still like to have a conditional use permit application submitted? Because it would be a more comprehensive overview of the project? Or would you like something done that is more or less ticks the boxes of the conditional use permit but is done in the spirit of the traditional neighborhood development overlay?
I think, I know Art weighed in that it would be the traditional neighborhood development. But I kind of, I personally, I would prefer it under the conditional use application in the spirit of traditional neighborhood development. So that, that way we are following our ordinance as required. And so, and follow the procedure there. So there's no questions whether or not we follow the correct procedures. So it would be conditional use in the spirit of traditional neighborhood development. I don't know how my colleagues feel, so.
I think that's where we'd go, just because that's where Art had steered us. So I think that's, I think where we need to go, the conditional use permit or process, sorry. Anyone have any objections there? So yes, let's just, we'll go down that road. Art, did you get that? Just so you have that clear. Okay, awesome. Did that help you, Brienne?
And yes, very much so. And then also to clarify too, then this, you do also want it to go through planning review, correct?
If, I think we want to just let Alex look at it. And if he feels all right with it, then we don't need to send it to the planning board. If he sees something where it needs to go, then we will send it through there. But from the sounds of, everyone thinks that it's just a, we just want a precursor and make sure that we've got it done right. So I think just going through Alex will be sufficient.
Yeah, what I think would be appropriate, I could get just a copy of the general concept that you guys were looking at.
And we can get that.
And then I'll look at the file we have for the original approval of the North Forty subdivision. And I'll also compare that with the, the current applicable zoning. I'll coordinate with Art on what I find to be the case. And we'll be in touch from there.
Okay.
Yeah, by the way, I don't know that we've met before, but if you have any need to correspond and have any, you know, questions or if there's any input that we can provide, I'll try to get your email from the commission here tonight.
Okay, I would appreciate that, that would be very helpful, thank you.
What I'll do, Alex, is I'll send you everything I have electronically tomorrow. And that'll include Brienne's and the rest of the folks, all their email addresses. And I'll see, see you on most of their emails as well. So you'll see the thread as well of how it was developed.
That sounds great. I am familiar with the original approval of North Forty. I read up on that when we were reviewing Phase Five last year. And I have looked at the zoning today, I did a little bit of perusing through. I would say right now, I'm leaning towards, for what it's worth, it appears that there's going to be able to be the use of that exemption. I'd be surprised if not, but we still need to look at it closely.
And the utilities are a huge thing for us right now with the amount of projects.
Do you have enough main line going up there for these three projects combined?
I mean, a six inch will handle eight bathrooms and four kitchens and laundry. Yeah, yeah, so I would, I, actually, I'm not going to answer that because I think until we see actually the scope of the project, we don't know what it is yet. We see pictures, I haven't seen nothing for water and sewer. I don't guess you're going to put in this one, but I haven't seen any plans. So I guess what I would say to that is the way it's set up, I would probably say yes. But until we see their mechanical design, we don't really know what they're really doing. And that maybe at that point, we may have to look at their plan and have our engineer look at their plan and see what they think about it.
Okay. All right, very good. Brienne, do you have anything else for us?
No, I believe that's everything, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Art, you're up again.
Yeah, Brent, are you around? Where are you?
I think Brent's having a hard time getting through on go-to meeting. I can, I can speak if you'd like.
Okay, is that Justin?
Go ahead.
Okay. Whichever one of you wants to speak, go ahead, we're ready for it.
I'll start, and I'll try and short circuit this from the previous discussion because what you're looking at in front of you is very similar to what Brienne was just presenting. So Art, so what we did is we turned in a conditional use permit, meeting all the requirements of the conditional use application. Again, it's very similar. We're looking at doing a condominium development, 13 units. It's a little backup here, it's Block Three of North Forty. It is zone CCR, and it is in the TND overlay, 1.71 acres. It's to remain in a condo owners association. Alex, I completely concur with you earlier as far as the exemption. I fully expect it to be valid, just because this, the development was anticipated to be used for this loading, for example, whether it's a condo or this, this much traffic and this much use, for example, I think that's applicable. So I'm going off that assumption. As far as some of the water, sewer, stormwater issues, this is, so water, sewer and stormwater will be, well, it'll be reviewed by DEQ. So we fully intend to do that. The focus of this meeting right now is we have a conditional use. And so what we're asking you is for the boundaries of the conditional use, whether or not we can put these live work units on it. So that's what we're asking the town council to do. The County Core Residential lists two things as the, as a conditional use. One of which, in fact, let me pull it up here real quick. One of which is home occupations, the other one is residential. And so what we're trying to do here is create these live works and be very clear on what the use is and ensure that we're meeting the town's understanding as far as what we're doing. As far as the parking, I know we're deficit on parking. We can provide more additional parking in there for ADA. We meet, there's about four and a half parking spaces per unit. Each unit is, has two bedrooms. So per the city code, there would be three parking spaces for each unit. And then you'd have to provide one additional for handicap. So when you're looking at it from a raw perspective, there isn't adequate parking. However, we would have to adjust some of the parking to accommodate the ADA. The, is to provide a, as much open space and greenery as we can, primarily because it is entry corridor. So keeping this is as good looking as possible is a goal of Brett and Dave, the owners. It was brought up in previous applications for sidewalks. I'd like to ask the council here in a few minutes when I'm done with the presentation as far as where you'd like that sidewalk. The obvious location for it would be on the west side of the property. I don't think it serves a lot of use to put it on the east side up against the highway. In fact, I think that would be a bad idea, but I'll defer to the council for that. The side, the units are approximately 2,000 square foot each, they might be smaller. We have some preliminary architectural drawings on it that show what the layout is. And like I said earlier, they're definitely two bedrooms. The bottom is primarily for work, the upper level is primarily for living. So there's plenty of storage space inside of it. It's about just shy of 1,000 square feet on the first floor and likewise on the second floor. The height of the building is 27 foot, three inches tall. And in our current design, it may fluctuate, it may go up, it may go down. But that's what we're looking at right now. Colors, that was an issue in the previous application. We have not decided on the colors, it could be something that would fit in. It's not going to be neon green or anything like that. We'll make something that's, that's looking, which is very important to the owners. There was another issue that came up as far as covenants. We'll have a declaration of covenants for this condo owners association. And this, the entire application will, and Alex is very well versed in this, but. And this, the entire application will, and Alex is very well versed in this, but, uh, the application will come with site plans, floor plans of each unit and also the covenant, which outline the, the game, the rules of the game, basically for, uh, this development. So that'll all be contained in the covenants and the declarations. The way I, I see this and, and Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, we would submit a condominium declaration and the entire plan to you. You'd review this as a condominium plan. Once you've found it, uh, element substantially approvable, uh, you'd send it to the town council. Um, is that the way you understand it, Alex?
I would actually need to take a look a little bit at what the proposal is, Justin.
Okay.
I kind of came down here on an invite to talk about, um, a specific matter, but I don't know the particulars enough to, to really answer your question.
Sure.
I think that in the event that I, I do take a look at, um, some of these types of matters for the town, most of my interaction, if I find that the exemption is applicable, most of my interaction would be directly with Art. And I believe Art would then communicate in-house with the, with the town on that.
Okay. Okay. So regardless, um, just to kind of read what we're looking at here is we turn in the condition use permit for an existing lot. The existing lot has covenant or has, uh, zoning with the RTB overlay. And so what we're asking for now is consideration on the condition you, conditional use permit for permitted use. The next step for us, if the town council agrees that this is an acceptable use, and we would take these and refine them and provide as much detail as we can with respect to, for example, landscaping, sidewalks, the, the building sizes, things of that nature. Um, and at that point, we would, we would submit that application to Art and to Alex and, and they would, go through it and determine what the next step would be.
And if I may interject, Justin, um, if, if there is in fact is a application that does need to have a staff report prepared, we're, we're certainly on board with doing that work. In, in such a case, that will be forwarded to the town commission.
Okay. I can assure you, you know, if the town council agrees to, um, agrees that this is an acceptable use and the next step or the next application that you would get would be the, the condominium site plan of which would be a very full and well thought out application, complete with architectural plans and engineering and landscaping plans. So the last, uh, I'll be off my soapbox here in one second, guys. Appreciate you listening. The last, uh, question and clarification that's kind of giving us fits is the setbacks on this property are to be determined by the, the town council. Uh, as you can imagine, those setbacks are very critical for our site design. So, uh, that's one of the key items that we'd like to have decided tonight. With that, I'll turn it over for a discussion.
Thank you, Justin. Can you explain to me, um, because thank you for, um, putting in that proposal. What, um, live work, what does that, um, what does that mean? Businesses or, um, home occupations, are you anticipating in these kinds?
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit on, and I've, I've done a lot of this over in, in the Bozeman area. And what it, you know, it, it, it actually tailors to a wide range of uses. The, the initial use would be a young landscaper that doesn't have enough money for rent of a house and rent of a business to store his skid steer or trencher or whatever. So this would be a middle for that individual. Uh, we've had a lot of people that have them for toy barns. They park through our V's in them and then they have a place to go. Uh, some people would, uh, you know, live in it for part of the year and then go down south for the winter or whatever it would be. Uh, so it's, it's, while it originally turned out to be a, um, a, a, a commercial building that you could actually live in, uh, it's, it's gained a lot of traction in the Bozeman area because it does provide folks an alternative to buying a house and then buying a shop or a structure, uh, for their small businesses.
So, uh, and according to our, okay, thank you for that. So I guess my concern is, is that when the North Forty was originally plotted, it was more to be more, when it was in the core commercial, um, when you look at the struc- structure, it says to maintain strength in the downtown core area and facilitate the continuance of its western small town character. Um, so I guess my concern is that these live work type things, once they're built, we would not, the town council would not have a, um, each building would not have a zoning permit every time they came in. And so, um, the core commercial area was really to be, and I believe it's how, you know, looking at the North Forty's original concept, it was supposed to be shops and restaurants and then this living area above there. Also in our home occupations, um, cover, it says no more than 30% of the gross area of all structures should be used for such a purpose. Um, and at, um, 2,000 square feet, 1,000 square feet of it being a shop, that puts it over, um, the regulation of home occupation, um, and what is considered a home occupation. So, uh, I guess those are my concern, um, on that, um, as well as, um, again, in our traditional neighborhood development, it outlines that it's supposed to be walkability, all of that. And, um, you know, the pattern just seems to have, and I know it's, this is just preliminary in a landscaping kind of thing, but, uh, uh, yeah, just to make it more walkable and something that this area was more supposed to be, yeah, I guess in my mind and according to the pictures on the North Forty development, that it was supposed to be shops and restaurants and, uh, those types of things and not, you know, Bobcats and heavy equipment and things like that. And so I think it kind of, um, is not exactly the use that we might be looking for, um, in my opinion. But I don't know what my colleagues have to say on that.
Well, and let me, let me, uh, let me also state a condition use of this zoning just for single and multifamily dwellings.
Yeah.
Don't it go.
Yeah. I, I would like to see, um, or well, I would not like to see the more commercial type storage down below and like a living space above like we have over in Fort Corrigan. I prefer to see, uh, more shops and stuff at the bottom, like the original plan for that area in the North Forty. And, you know, kind of, you have so many units, just one right after the other. I'm afraid it's going to look kind of, I don't know, just kind of cookie cutter, you know?
Yeah. I'm not disagreeing. My big thing, you guys are the designer, that part, but the sewer and the water again, sorry to bring that up again. Uh, with this many, uh, units coming in, what do we need to have our engineer look at that to make sure that we're, or do you need, what information do you need from him to?
Well, uh, just same time for Justin and Joe who's going to be up next, I'm guessing. Uh, it's going to be the, the same question. Uh, I've, I've seen no plans, so I, I have no idea. Uh, I'm, I'm two big projects that they're doing. I'm guessing they're going to have a mechanical engineer, uh, look at it, show us, uh, show us what their plans are and then we will have our engineer review them. The other, the other thing, uh, that's a big concern to us and we see happening out at the North Forty a lot is, uh, streets getting tore up and, uh, the, the developer or the owner thinking that, uh, they'll just skip out on the $500 bond. You, you can hardly fix a pothole for $500. So, uh, so for both Justin and Joe, uh, and, and even, uh, the Willow, uh, well, I actually, I don't think they're tearing up any. Anyway, my point is that, uh, that they need to fix the streets.
So we can put that in our conditional use though, Brett. Okay.
Yeah, just, just an FYI on any of this. So this is a water and sewer main extension. This is a requirement of the city and the DEQ to review. So you can get out of it. Neither of us.
Yeah. Do you mind if I ask a question?
No, please don't.
Uh, Justin, um, on the site that you're looking at, what's the, um, total acreage?
1.71 acres.
And how many of these separate units are you considering?
Thirteen.
Would they be detached or attached?
Detached.
Okay. Um, I was just curious.
Go ahead.
Pardon me? Well, I was just curious if there's going to be a conditional use, used for it. If the compatibility with the residential neighborhood is in question with regard to the occupation of these live work units, would it, would it be possible within your design to create a, maybe a certain set aside area that would be screened? Like a fenced, fenced or screened area that where they could park their equipment? So that the actual street scape doesn't look like a industrial zone?
Certainly. I guess what I would say on that is, is, um, is we, we can certainly do that. I would, um, we can address that in the covenants and declarations so that it's addressed completely, whether it be screening or fencing or whatever that would be. And I guess I'd look, I would propose that maybe the town council have a discussion about that now or in the next 10 minutes and determine what, what you would like to see and we can incorporate that into our declarations.
That's also a interesting part of this GCNR. That you can't have heavy equipment and campers parked outside on your property.
And again, I'm not so, the earlier question was, is what, what are these used for? And so I gave you some examples of what they're using in Bozeman. Now, if, if the council is not comfortable having, you know, a dump truck, for example, which by the way, I agree, parked out in the, out in the lot, it, by all means, we can limit the use so that there's no overnight outside parking. So that's not something that's unheard of and that's been done many times in the past here locally.
Did I add something real quick? This is Brett, one of, one of the project owners. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
So I guess our vision for this project is a low impact, uh, live work type of concept. Where we don't have people parking stuff in the parking lot. The idea would be through the covenant, that would be set up. Is that everything would have to be stored inside the shop garage space? And I wouldn't, I don't think there would be a need to create any fencing to hide stuff or stuff that's parked in the parking lot because that's not what we're after. We want it to look more, uh, residential than it does industrial or commercial with, you know, low impact uses in Bozeman that have been really successful for this concept. If somebody might turn the garage into an exercise training studio. It could be a massage therapist. It could be an artist. Um, we have one guy in Bozeman that had a wrap service. He would pull small trailers, drift boats into the shop space and put a wrap on them. So, and the idea is make this something that's attainable and affordable for the people of the community where you're not, you're, you're not budgeting for a commercial space and a residential space. You're, you're going to get everything all in one. That's, that's generally what we're looking for on this. If, if that makes more sense.
Do you have an example of, of a project in Bozeman that you've done or, um, so we can kind of, um, get a concept of, um, what it looks like in practice?
Yeah, so there's four or five different little projects in Bozeman that we can show good examples of. Uh, depending if it's in the city or in the county, they're all a little different in terms of shapes and sizes and allowable uses. Um, within the city of Bozeman, the problem they've got through their zoning is they don't let you have enough residential space in percentage to the commercial space. So that makes it a little harder on affordability side. And then, um, some of the more successful projects have allowed more of a 50/50, uh, type space or a little bit more residential space component to it. Um, but I can provide multiple examples. Um, again, I want this to be blended into more of the residential, uh, look of the subdivision instead of, instead of having a commercial feel. And I would also say our attempt, our, we're going to have a high attention to detail. These are not going to let cookie cutter. Um, we, we want to kind of change the material up on the outsides. Maybe some color changes, but we also want it to blend in and have more of that Montana, uh, earth tone feel to it as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think very similar to the last project, we need to kick it over to Alex to start with, if that's okay. Again, I want to ask and have him, uh, uh, look at and approve, uh, the pro, uh, project looks really solid. I'm, I'm still worried about the water, obviously, but together with that, but, uh, as for an answer tonight, I think we need to make sure and take more time and look at this and make sure we have Alex, uh, okay, and then look at anything that might, uh, come up. Art, do you have anything else with that as well?
We could treat this just like that other one, the same thing. I'll, I'll take a look at it and I'll, uh, communicate with Art and Kelly as, as, uh, needed and, uh, take it from there.
Okay. Because then when we get it into the conditional use spot, then we can, uh, really break down the actual use of what we can't, will or won't allow as far as the inside of that. But that's where we'll have a little more control of that. But I think that way, uh, we are, uh, a little bit more educated on what's going on here. Anyone agree, disagree? What are your thoughts, guys?
Well, I, I really liked what Lisa was saying. If there was a place in Bozeman that we could look at that's similar to what they're thinking about doing, we can have a better understanding. I mean, they could talk about it all they want, but seeing it in actuality means a lot more.
So if you'd be willing to provide those examples of in Bozeman, in the county, and so just, so we can see it in practice, um, that would be fantastic.
Sure. How, how would you like that to look? Would you like pictures or would you like addresses so you can drive by or, or what would you like?
Uh, probably both. If we could have some pictures and then maybe some, some also addresses. I happen to be going to Bozeman tomorrow, so I could take a little field trip, uh, seeing there. Uh, I know Mr. Bancroft is quite the driver and so he likes to take.
I'm done driving.
You're done driving? Okay, well, uh, but maybe some other, yeah, so, uh, so maybe some pictures for Mr. Bancroft, but some addresses for us, uh, would be great. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if I can get pictures by tomorrow morning, um.
Oh, no, not just, I picture them by tomorrow morning. I was just, yeah.
And I just wanted to, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say, can we send these to Art and Art, can you distribute these?
Yeah, I could do the same thing. Just send them electronically. I'll get everything over to Alex. I'll transfer your in. I'll transfer your information over to Alex as well, and then I'll.
Okay, well, we'll send it to you and to Alex then. That works.
Sounds good. Okay, I guess I should start with this for all of you folks. Is, uh, 12 and 13 unit developments are a new thing for us that we're dealing with. We've never had projects in this town council or this current incarnation. So it's, uh, a lot of information for us to take in, a lot of things for us to look at, and we're not trying to push you guys off, but we need to make sure and understand what we're doing because this is a big setup for us and it's new for all of us. So uh, sorry for the little bit of hesitation and a lot of the questions, but we need to make sure that we do this right. We're not trying to, we love the projects. I think that's, uh, with all of us, but just please be patient with us and give us the time to be able to process everything. Because usually we're dealing with one house. So it's a lot different than, uh, the 12 and 13 units.
Yeah, totally. You got a great resource there and Alex, so lean on him because he's seen a lot of these.
Yes. Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for Justin? Okay, thank you. That, for your presentation. Art, next one, please.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Mr. Finley's up. Um, hopefully you guys had a chance to see it and got in late this morning. Um, but Mr. Finley, why don't you take us through what you got proposed?
Yeah, thanks, guys. I just want to take a, a quick second to take a step back and explain to who we are and, and, and the kind of the idea or goal of what we're looking to do. Um, you know, we're, we're a family owned business. It's ranching, uh, Montana over the past 20 years and, uh, since moving on from ranching in Jackson and outside of Glen, most recently, uh, making a pivot to address the housing needs in Montana. Um, obviously, we enjoy the Montana lifestyle and are looking to give back by investing locally. Uh, Summit and Skies is a Montana based development company focusing on, uh, serving long-term housing needs. And, uh, we currently have our first project underway in Bozeman. Um, a question comes up of why Venice, and the town has been attracted to us for the, um, as we see the demand for long-term housing, all but eliminated, um, those pressures being placed on the community housing, um, as you guys all know, stemming a lot from Airbnb and VRBO. Um, I'm looking to make Montana my permanent residence here in the near future and working in the community full-time to oversee his projects along with others. Um, we're working currently with four ocean architects and working to add an engineer and local general counsel. Um, and just wanted to say that I'm appreciative of the opportunity to share a proposal with council. And let's look at this as a working document to build common ground with the town of Venice. Matt, do you wanna, do you wanna take over on the, uh, preliminary site plan? Can you turn the mic on? Did, did everyone get a preliminary site plan along with exterior, um, views of the building and the three, three dimensional link?
Uh, we only got, um, views of the building. We did not get a site plan. So if there's a by chance, you can send it to, um, an email real quick. That would be handy. So you can send it to mine with Lisa R., so L.I.S.A.R. at VeniceMontana, all spelled out, dot org.
Got it.
Thank you.
This is when I just came in this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, part of it.
Getting in here shortly, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, so Joe, how many units per building?
Yeah, that's, that, when I heard you guys talking about the other projects, I don't want anyone's head to pop off, but, um, the, each one of these units were, uh, asking that it would be 14 units per building, um, which would be above the, uh, maximum of 12 units, uh, per acre, high density residential, um, which averages out to 18 units per acre. Um, but yeah, there's nine buildings that are 14.
So. So, okay, and, uh, so it is nine buildings with eight, wait.
14.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, with, um, okay, so nine, nine, nine buildings with 14 units.
Each?
Each.
Correct.
126 in the.
Say again, Art?
126.
A total of 126. And Joe, are these gonna be apartments or condominiums or?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be apartments. Uh, we have no desire to, uh, sell them as condominiums. This is for long-term housing options for people, uh, at us. Uh, speaking with a number of people in town, uh, the hospital and other businesses, um, are looking for a place to have uh, young professionals and other, other, um, members of the community to have quality, uh, long-term housing.
That area is currently town density.
Yeah, so that area is currently town density, so that obviously.
Or actually, it's half and half.
Yeah, because I think Josh, uh, August of 2019, um, Josh asked.
Uh, Lisa blocks four and six were, uh, Josh requested to change from park commercial residential to residential town density back in August.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, based on the, uh, need for residential density. Um, so we're on here. So over here. So this one and then this one be changed to residential.
Oh, so they're all.
Yeah.
So they should be
um, so. Yeah.
So that's all yellow?
Yeah, across that, uh, western side, yes. And then, um, in block one was already residential town density or is that? That's what the map is showing.
Yeah, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong. This is Art. Um, only blocks four and six.
Yes.
Only map home.
Okay, and then, okay, if I'm on a current zoning map, we have.
Four and six were changed. Block, block one was originally.
Yeah, so it's block one, four and six are now residential town density.
Okay, so that's, that whole western edge is all residential town density. So this project exceeds our current, um, density requirements.
My, my memory is one, one eighth of an acre for dwelling unit and residential town density. So the zoning would have to be changed to something else that, uh, I, I don't know of anything that we have a fit 126. So it would have to be um, a, a change towards, um, uh, Mr. Finley's project to almost a custom fit for it.
Well, we can't just go changing just for a specific project. I mean, you would just not build that many. Brett? Aaron?
Yeah, I, I don't think we can make a specific zoning designation for one, uh, one project. Um, yeah.
That's, that's understandable to myself. Is there something like I, like I had mentioned at the beginning? Um, this is just something very preliminary for us and, uh, would like to, to hear your feedback on what you would suggest.
Yeah, so I think it would have to go, I mean, even in our, we have a proposed zoning, the maximum that it would be would be 12 units per acre. Um, and then, um, and I, and looking at this, um, is there a way to do some under?
Josh, what's the total square, what's the total acreage of all three of those lots together? Do you have that information handy?
Yes, it's 7.1 acres.
So, 7.1, even at residential town density times, that'd be about 56 dwelling units with quick math.
No.
So.
Oh, with RTD, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I mean, it would be, yeah.
If you went to 12 units per acre, you're looking at four, 80, 84 units. So somewhere between 56 and 126.
Yeah, and in, in respect to those other folks that were our other two projects, they came within our, um, residential town density, um, current standards. Um, and so, you know, I would, and we already know that our proposed zoning is not passed, and so I would like it to see come in to those parameters. I don't know, for myself. And then is there, I guess, if we're looking at, um, and if we're decreasing the number of units, um, maybe it wouldn't be so bad because right now, I guess my feedback would be, is there any way to do underground parking? Because that has essentially become um, tall buildings and, and parking lots. So, um, uh, so yeah, so I, I don't know how my colleagues feel about, um, that number of units. Again, I guess this one would definitely need to go to the planning board.
See, I, uh, I'm, I disagree with you a little bit. I think, uh, this one will take us a little bit more time. I would love to see the amount of units he has in there because this is one of our biggest issues is housing, and this will give, 126 units would give a lot. It's a lot there and it's, uh, we need to really look and see if we can get creative to help them get there. This is not gonna be a quick one. Sorry, guys, to tell you to be honest, but I would love to be able to get, if it's not that amount, close to that amount, because the housing shortage that we're having right now is huge.
Exacerbated, and I get that, but we can't just, we can't, that opens Pandora's box of creating a special zoning designation for one single project. And, um, and so it's gonna, it's gonna take some time to do that. I think it would, I think it would behoove us to, you know, look at our proposed zoning and the number of, um, you know, we did, it was 12 units per acre, and I think that is, um.
That's still a substantial amount.
Yeah, that's still a substantial amount. And I think that fixed, I mean, to go from eight, um, to then 18, you know, that is a significant amount for the town, town of Venice. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it is huge.
Scale of project is nothing we can wait for. And so, um, and, and again, if we're gonna do that, and, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I didn't hear, hear this, and I apologize if you already said it, but, but what they're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is that they're looking more at one and two bedroom two bedroom units?
Units.
So you've got a lot more options for people coming in. Um, so the number of doors seems a lot higher. But I think, you know, if, even if you've got your same eight unit density, if you have three and four and five bedroom units in there, you know, I, I don't know that your actual amount of people is that much different. Just a much nicer living condition that they're proposing providing i- in a sense, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
I, I think you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, Joe.
No, I was, I was just gonna say, that's a, that's a big part of what, um, we're trying to do. The amount of units. Um, it, it adds a number of doors, but they're not, you know, uh, three bedroom, uh, single family homes on each lot. Uh, if it were to be subdivided, um, our, our current plans actually, uh, would be to have, uh, a single, uh, three bedroom in each 14 ones. So it is predominantly ones and two bedroom units.
Kelly?
So I appreciate what Lisa's saying, but the fact is, we can't say it cannot happen. You know, it, it may take a resolution, it may take some public hearings and things, but anything can happen.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, and that's fair. It's just not gonna happen by Thursday.
No.
So it's not my deal. And, and then also, you know, like, we do need, I, I think this project would need, um, public hearings and input and stuff like that. There's, um, so we'd have to have a lot of community input because.
Also, Lisa, um, is Alex, Alex still there?
Yes, I'm here, Art.
Yeah, um, because this is, this is a rental, there we, uh, it's required to go through a planning review. Um, I, I don't, I don't think it meets the exemption of a single tract or, uh, the condos don't, but apartments do because they're rented. Am I correct?
Um, I'd wanna take a, a close look at that before I put my foot in my mouth. I do have some thoughts, though, that I'd like to share on, on this. Okay. Uh, I do recognize that the town is working on some amendments to their zoning regulations and, um, potentially the zoning map. When there's a topic of an individual seeking a particular use and that that particular use doesn't comply with zoning, oftentimes the individual is compelled to seek a zone change. Um, in this case, if it was a change of designation on a property, it would be called a zoning map amendment. A statute outlines the applicability of that type of provision. And I think the more we see our population shifting, we're gonna see these matters come in front of us more frequently, and we'll become more familiar with the processes. Um, one thing that is really important to not get drawn into is in that type of scenario I just described, it's really easy, easily, um, well, it's very easy for a governing body, in this case, the town of Venice, and an individual. If the town responds to a single individual's desire and that, that target is not something that's already on the books and it's not laid out and established according to the regulations, there's a circumstance called spot zoning that can be found to occur, and spot zoning is illegal. So I don't want to encourage the town to simply bend over and get themselves into a, a problem of spot zoning all of a sudden. A more, uh, appropriate way to go about that would be for the town to take a look at its growth policy and its priorities and its current demands on its resources. And if it's appropriate, that the town wants to adopt a new designation classification of zoning into their regulations, they might, might do such a thing, and then you can implement that. But you really don't want to just knee jerk react to a given single project and create, um, a type of zoning that's gonna get litigious and challenged. That's what's on my mind, Art.
And we know about this.
And that's why I'm retiring on April 1st.
Hold on.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, another thing for consideration is not only how this, you know, is used in its 126 units, whatever, is what Alex just briefly mentioned, is other resources of our community and services. our community and services that we provide and how it's gonna implicate that. So with, you know, 126 units, you know, if they have two people each, you know, that's 252 people. I don't know what the 2020 census was, but Ennis was, you know, 842 people. If now we then grow it in a small dense area by more than 25%, that, that has other implications too. So that's something we need to look at, the whole big picture of how that is gonna ride out, so.
I, I think, you know, if you wanna look at it that way, the only thing it's gonna do is help people out. You know, if, if you've got that many more year-round residents, that just makes everything easier for business owners. I mean, really, the only impact that I can see having is on the water and sewer capacity. But, you know, as far as social and economical availability, I don't think this does anything but help. You know, we get inundated in the summer with, you know, up to 3,000 people. And then, you know, start in the winter time because there's no one in town, so. I think the improved density is, you know, nothing but good for the town. But, you know, it's just my opinion.
The, the point you touched on about capacity with water sewer, I had had a couple of preliminary discussions with Kelly Essler and he assured me that sewer side of, or excuse me, yeah, on the wastewater side of things, that there is more than adequate capacity. It's, the facility was built for 2,000 units and I believe it said served at about 800 currently. And then we were going to further discussion about water. But if it helps give any clarity, or anyone has any comments, I'd be interested to hear.
I didn't catch the question.
He just said that there was probably enough water in sewer to accommodate that, or enough sewer, but he wasn't showing the water.
Definitely, definitely the sewer, but again, again, like I said, Joe, when I, when I spoke earlier and until we see the plans, and I'm sure you, with a project like this, you got a mechanical engineer that would be able to tell us what the demand would be on your project and then we just have our engineer confirm those numbers.
Yeah, understood.
So under this current, our current zoning right now, the most they could put on there is 84 units, 12 per acre, is that right?
No, under our current zoning is eight per acre.
Eight. Thank you.
Can somebody please elaborate? At some, somewhere along the line, I, I spoke with somebody and was told that there was gonna be a rezoning in, in the town from RTD to HDR, which would put us at that 12 units per acre. Is that something that's in the works or is it something that, am I, am I having the wrong information?
No, you're correct on that. We are currently looking at a proposed zoning of adding a high density district that would be up to 12 units per acre.
But not in that area.
But I think we would at least have that zoning designation where we would avoid the issue that Alex brings up of the spot zoning. At least it would be already, and so we're hoping to get through that in a timely manner, but it started about three years ago and so, so, or four years ago. So this is actually what this work session meeting was supposed to be going over tonight, was actually familiarizing ourselves with the, the, you know, updated zoning code for the town council members. And then it has to, you know, we were gonna lean on Alex to review it and put his inputs and then have legal review as well. So unfortunately, I can't give you a timeline on that, but that was, you are correct, that is, there would be a HDR of up to 12 units per acre.
Okay. And, and was there also, am I also understanding that the town was looking to adjust the height requirements from 25 feet to up to 35 feet? Is that correct?
No.
It was up to 30.
Okay. So if we were looking, you know, down the road, if we were looking to, you know, we would be looking for a variance for height, and that would be something else that we would be looking to work through.
If the area was core commercial, which it was, then it could be 40 feet. Or part of it was core commercial. Then that's a 40-foot maximum structural height.
What are, what are you guys feeling on the ability to grant a variance for height request of anything below, not reaching 40 feet?
I think we would have to just continue going through our current zone reevaluation and maybe better for you to just wait for that to happen.
Can you repeat? I apologize, there's a lot of background noise.
Sorry, I was just saying that it might be better for you to just kind of feel out and wait, see what happens with our zoning review that we're doing and, you know, if we get that RHD zone, then we would be able to use that zone instead of just creating, like God was saying, a spot zone. So, you know, in, in that capacity, we might be able to help you out by making that area an RHD.
Okay.
Yeah, because right now, above, proven forest 56.
Yeah, currently, we can only improve 56, but in the RHD.
We're gonna potentially 84.
Go up to 84. And that is, the height is something we can look at in our proposed zoning too. So then that way it wouldn't need a variance because variances have proved to be problematic.
And I, just speaking personally, I'd like to work with you and try to get this to where you want it to be, but also, I'd also like to see some more, possibly doing some commercial spaces below where there could be a, a little business or something, you know, on the road level, like kind of was planned for this area of the north 40 to begin with. And same goes for some of these other units. I mean, we have a huge chunk of town that's about to be built here and we want to be smart about making it just how we want it to be. So some of these, you might consider doing a, you know, a first floor commercial space of sort, if you have a business there.
Yeah, we definitely could, we'll keep that into consideration and be willing to work, work with you guys on that.
Yeah.
And then as long as there's not any congestion, you know, like, we have too many people in there, it's, it's gonna be more of a, when it happens, people are gonna be like, why is, why did you guys think there was gonna be this many people here? How we can't even get around with our cars and, you know?
Are you speaking directly to the traffic flow inside the development or just in, in town in general?
No, just right around the development with parking and, you know, traffic flow, pedestrians and walkability. You know, you gotta imagine how many people we're gonna have there now. Just wanna do it smart, make sure everything's how it should be.
I think the appropriate action, like we've learned before, is that, is to get the, it might be behoove to wait for the zoning update because variances require a hardship, which is very difficult to prove. And so, so maybe that would be the best course of action is, yes, either, if you're, if you're looking to go ahead quickly, either scale it down to meet our current standards or if you wanted to add that up to number 12 units per acre, then it's just a matter of, of waiting.
Okay. And, and do you, you know, I understand with the variance having to prove a hardship, would there be an alternate avenue with the planned unit development that might be more beneficial for the council?
I think that would have, I think we'd have to get Alex's input on that. I don't think our current zoning, well, we, under our subdivision review, which are subdivision regulations, which we adopted the county subdivision regulations, there is a planned unit development. So if you wanted to go through subdivision.
Yeah, well, let me speak to that a little bit. Hi, Joe, this is Alex. I was kind of listening and I was wondering about the potential regarding density. I was wondering if the current Ennis zoning regulations have a strong enough provision regarding bonus density in the event somebody requests it through a PUD. That's a topic I've talked a little bit with Lisa about, just in general terms, when the town's been looking at some of the new zoning provisions they might think about including. To my awareness, the current regs don't have that provision. That's a common provision in many jurisdictions and it would seem like something to, to implement into an updated zoning regulation. Now, the Madison County subdivision regulations do have a PUD provision, however, those regulations were designed around the county framework. And in the county, outside of the town of Ennis, there is no zoning. So the subdivision zoning or subdivision regulations PUD provision does not address density at the present time or zoning. So we, I don't believe that we have such a provision to fall back on at present time. Yeah.
Okay.
In terms of the hardship and the variance concept, I think you were mentioning that you would anticipate potentially needing a variance for the height. I do think that would be quite challenging because under the purview of zoning, a variance basically is a, it really hinges upon a case of hardship. And the problem with that is that hardship, as it's established, it, it means that without a variance, you cannot put to a reasonable use the lot. And in the case of somebody just wanting to actually be able to go a little higher in order to attain a certain development density, that's not gonna, that really won't work to establish hardship. And I don't think we would want to encourage you to go down that path. As Jason was indicating, it, it's not what you want to hear, but it may be best to just be patient and let the town work through its zoning amendments. Perhaps there would be some changes on that height, particularly with public input. When the general public indicates a demand or a need for certain types of provisions, those are often implemented through amendments. And right now, the town is in the process of trying to amend the regulations, so I just think it would be folly to encourage you to design and plan for a hardship or plan for a variance when really there is no case of hardship.
I understand. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
I guess somebody had spoke earlier about the, the question about potential for underground parking. Is, is the parking situation, is that something that's playing into, along with the density? Can you guys speak on that so I have a better understanding?
Uh, well, just really quick, there, did you know there is no parking on Otis? So it would all be. Okay, so I'm seeing this for the first time. Wow, so it's just parking lots and buildings.
And I guess that was my concern with that is with the number of units and the required number of spaces for parking is that then it just becomes, yeah, a parking lot and, and buildings. And so if there was a way to do some underground parking so there's more common space or, you know, usable area as opposed to just for parking. Parking is obviously essential, but to have, you know, a nice landscape or amenities for those people that are using, that are in that, in those buildings for, for them to, you know, get outside or whatever, some gathering places type things in there as well. So that was kind of just my initial reaction to, to the schematic that you sent.
And as I mentioned before, this definitely is a working document for us. We're, we're, we'll be taking all the input into making adjustments. But, correct me if I'm wrong, both of these labels here are designated as park, parks? Is that correct, Josh?
Yes.
That's correct.
Would you be willing to, I guess part of that would be the discussion, would you be willing to help develop then those parks? Because right now, there are just around and about, and I don't think the town has the parks and max budget to put into, to developing those as to more usable space.
It, it, that certainly would be, it's up for discussion with us if that is beneficial of the town and can help us alleviate some of the concern for, for those open spaces. I believe that's a discussion that we can have. Unless there's any objection, Josh, for how that plays out for the, the remainder of the development.
No, I, I think that's a good discussion to have. And, you know, we've also seen some parking lots incorporate trees and landscaping and all that kind of stuff, so they don't just look open and barren. I, I know you guys have done a nice job laying the stuff up that I've seen. So I, I think that there's some definite solutions to that, just being an open, an open space. But yeah, we, we definitely look at, you know, developing some of the parts a little bit more.
The one concern I would have about the, the open space or parks there would be that you're essentially surrounded, you're on an island, so to speak, with, with traffic around you. So it would definitely have to be fenced and, you know, maintained in, in a fashion like that.
Sure. Yeah, well, that's. I, I think we can take a look at it and come up with an easy solution there.
Somebody's speaking, I'm sorry, it can't, it's not picking up.
I heard you, Joe, but I didn't hear anyone else.
Yeah, I think they got a poor connection.
An open space, place like.
Wow. Okay. Joe, I guess that's, with this being said, it's kind of in your ballpark as to what you want to do with this, whether you want to scale back or if you wanna be patient and wait for us to go through the zoning, it's really up to you at that point in time and we'll just have you continue to keep in touch with Art until we decide what that next step is.
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. I do appreciate it.
Okay. Because I'd love to see something like this come along.
Yeah, I, I think it's mutually beneficial. It's going to definitely provide a service. And if there's a way to dial it back just a little bit, that helps, helps both sides of, the sides out, I think that it's definitely something we can discuss, so.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else have anything else with that? Okay, thank you, everyone. One thing, we're going to have Alex want to talk to us a little bit.
Want to jump in on your handout?
Sure. Just go, that goes into this zoning stuff.
Some, just some things to touch base in terms of just concepts.
Thank you. That's this one, Jones.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I'm going to sit over here where Kelly was.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
Just so you know, you lost your picture.
Yeah, our picture, you took us down.
I didn't touch anything.
So, it's nice to be able to talk with you. There have been a couple phone calls coming to our office lately with some speculation and questions about what people might be able to do. And some of these were echoed inside in your proposal. This one concept about condominium exemption is, is an interesting thing. I'm not really sure what you're familiar with working with on these topics, how familiar, how familiar you are, how frequently they come on. So there's just some basic rudimentary topics that I think are healthy to talk about, so we can understand that they exist. For instance, I get phone calls sometimes regarding ideas people have on potential properties that they might see for sale in your town boundary. But we also get calls with queries regarding properties on your border, but outside of the town. Now, there are about three of those that I have some ongoing correspondence with. And what they're pointing at is the topic of annexation. And annexation is a, it's a really critical topic for an incorporated town. Once you have a request by somebody to annex, it can't be ignored. Doesn't mean it has to be approved, but a decision has to be made. And some of the elements that have to be really considered, they require some thoughtful proactive thinking. You wouldn't want to look at your infrastructure that would be associated with it. That can be anything from roads, water, sewer, stormwater, provision for public access, provision for schools. Capacity at schools is often something that gets overlooked when we're talking about, you know, large projects. But it's a very important thing. When a town agrees to annex in some property on its boundaries, there is an implication that the town will provide services, or will be able to provide services. Usually, this comes in the form of a request for water and sewer connections, as opposed to what are the conventional systems that go well and separate. On the third sheet that I provided you, this is something that, that any planner has to deal with from time to time. Now, whether it's adjacent to an incorporated city, or just an established public water and sewer system. Essentially, this part of the code, this ties into the second topic on my front sheet, by the way, which is, when somebody's wanting to divide their land, or implement a new use that never existed, that use is going to require water and sewer. This section 601 ends up being a basis for quite a bit of material. If you turn on the back, you see all these other links that connects into, next in the Montana Code, annotated. Ultimately, they refer to this section, I printed you on the third page. The bottom line is that if somebody who's in close proximity, within 500 feet of public water and sewer services, if they want to put in a use that's going to require wastewater treatment or potable water, they're required by law to communicate with the manager of that public system and ask, do you have the capacity to serve for the number of units and the uses I'm seeking? That's called a will serve letter. I don't know how frequently you're, you get that request.
I don't know that we ever have, that I know of.
It's, it will start happening the more that we get more people moving into the area and basically trying to find something to make it work, which is what we saw tonight. You know, three people looking at the same area, generally trying to figure out, what can we do with this? Now, I wanted to chat with you a little bit about the project that's located north of your town boundary, that 70 acre parcel that is west of the town wastewater treatment pond. That's a classic example, you can see it on the map, like, what is here, highlighted in blue.
Right here?
Up in, in this area that is currently out of the town boundaries, but it's right on your borders. There's definitely some interest in that property. That's an example of project that's, property currently under jurisdiction. However, they would want to use the city's water and sewer, and their access would be dependent wholly upon the city. So that project is prepared to ask you guys for an annexation request.
You have to remember one thing. If they request to be brought into the city, they put in the sewer and water. We don't.
Fair enough.
Okay, first of all, we're not even trying to annex anything in.
But they would request it.
If they requested it, they'd have to put it in. They have to put it in. We don't have the capacity to put it in.
I understand. That's a fair response.
Yeah.
It is a fair response. I'm just getting some communications from that group. And what I'm able to understand, they haven't shown us any specific plans, but just some general concept, that the writing is on the wall, that there's going to be a need for them, if they want to do what they indicate they'd like to do, then it's, it points to connection to your public water and sewer services. And you wouldn't allow anybody to connect to those services if they don't annex into the town. That's what this conversation really about, I think it's time to break the ice a little. Now, if they were going to do that, you look at the actual zoning, that property, for example, has some of your extraterritorial zoning, where your zoning map has extended beyond the bounds of town. That's, that's a provision that is enabled through statute. It allows first, second, and third class towns to exert zoning beyond their boundaries. The property that was there has four different designations. It's been indicated that they are going to seek a zone change. I don't know what the particulars are. But if it hasn't already come to you, I think it's good for us to just get on the same page, that this is an example of something that is on the doorstep. Not that it's a problem, but it's just something that we need to start to talk about, because this will entail the planning board and the county's coordination with you.
Didn't we wipe out agriculture, or did we leave that in there, the time we were talking?
In our, in our updates.
Yeah.
I think it was something we were...
Still on here, AG.
But we were talking about pulling it off, just because it didn't...
And I think we were also based on Alex's recommendation, that's where we had talked briefly about just administering what's in town and our extended highway entrances. So, but I think we left them just for what, you know, but I think that's something that we can certainly address. I mean, it's a draft, so.
Yeah, I just didn't remember.
As these, as these important issues comes up, and leaning on Alex's expertise, I think we can address those situations.
Yeah, that's one aspect, I'm certain of that.
No, you're good.
So when somebody, whether it's this property or some other property, there's a couple others as well. I've got three of them that I've been calling lately. Really, it's going to come down to some essential, essential communications that will have to happen. Would be, if they're located within 500 feet of a public system, they're essentially needing to connect to the system if there's capacity. And that would be a form of a will serve letter by the manager of the system, whether it's water or sewer or both. In the event that the public, the operator of the public system does not have capacity, it is reasonable to provide a letter that is a will not serve letter.
In that situation, say, what town did not have the capacity, what would like to increase its capacity to serve that? Is that the cost of that, is that like a special improvement district that could be serviced upon an area to increase that capacity? Or how does that mechanism work?
I think that those are provisions that can occur. And those would be agreements that you would draft up with your attorney.
Okay.
For instance, there's, there are occasions where somebody might have water rights, but they haven't developed one. And those water rights can actually augment a neighboring public system with the proper formal agreements. So that somebody's development, perhaps what they really need is, they certainly need to develop water and sewer for a project. But perhaps what they really need is the ability to utilize the public sewer services. But they also need water, but they've got the water and the ability through their own water rights, they can create an agreement where the public facility basically incorporates that water right into their system.
So they build a pump house, and then it becomes part of the city?
Yeah, the well and whatever is necessary to integrate that into a city's public water structure. Those types of provisions do occur. I wouldn't be surprised if one of those comes up fairly soon.
So we'd have to consider, you know, how many units you're trying to put in there, or how many can we service with our current, since we're 2,000?
2,000's the number that's hit my head.
And we have 840.
Currently?
800.
No, no, no.
1,400 do we have?
I was going to say new census, I haven't seen new census numbers yet.
But what are we actually servicing? The amount of people, doesn't matter, it's how many places are we actually servicing?
About 840.
I think we're going to need some kind of analysis.
Uh huh, yeah.
Instead of just standing in the dark at numbers, we're going to need a...
I mean, there's 500 and some bills that go out.
Yeah.
There are some that...
Are multiples.
Are, yeah.
Okay, and we need to know all of that. So that's one I think Great West needs to get. Is that who we would use for something like that?
They are, they are still the on-call engineer. And I know in, in past things that they've looked at in these, they've been good.
Yeah, I think we would definitely need some kind of assessment.
Yeah, so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
But it doesn't seem that we would be tipping the scales on that with, you know, even if we did need to do subdivision.
Okay, Josh, you have a question?
I do. More of a concern, really. I mean, if you're discussing annexing additional properties into the town, and you already have concerns about providing water, especially to the developments that already have entitlements to them. It, it's concerning for me to hear that, when...
And it's legit.
They have a source of water.
Exactly. That's why we were saying we would need some kind of assessment before any of this. These are all just preliminary discussions, and what we would have to have is, yeah, some kind of assessment to make sure that our capacity fits, which is the, the properties that are already in town, and making sure that we can service them, because as you say, they're already entitled to that service. And then, what if people are knocking on our door as to what our next move is, and how do we address that? So I think, I think your concern is Alex.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I think on the, the whole processing plant can handle 2,000, but that's not what the main can handle up at a certain area. You know, you, you have your main, and whatever side that is can handle certain flow. And then, once it gets closer to the processing plant, it gets bigger, so.
Well, then how much does the lagoons can handle themselves?
Yeah. So like up in the north 40, we would have to be looking at what side is the main line there? And I'm sure it could handle all that. Because you can do like eight bathrooms and four kitchens, four laundry rooms with a four inch pipe. So, you know, you've got quite a bit of flow in a six inch, which is what the other place was talking about putting in. We should have plenty of flow up there in the north 40.
Two condos aren't as concerning as the apartment complex thing. That's a...
Yeah, that's adding a lot more.
That's pretty high.
Even if you're in the 84 or more houses.
56 is scary.
I think, I think getting back to Alex's thing is, is we, we need to be prepared for these questions that are...
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
I was just about to kind of summarize. So basically, these forces are out there. You can never tell somebody, you can't knock on our door. I like your metaphor of knocking at the door. People are already making phone calls and inquiries. And Art has had to send a couple people my direction for some communications, and that's very folly. In order for coordinated planning and good, just good management of, of your town, the planning board is working with you. And we've, we've been looking at our interlocals lately, but I really just don't have enough familiarity with little nuts and bolts, such as what is the annexation policy for the town of Ennis? So if this comes up, we know how to appropriately respond.
I'll get that to you.
All right, that'd be great. The other...
Hello? Hello, this is Matt Mangy. I'm sorry, I, I apologize for, for interrupting the, the discussion. I, you know, I'm generally, generally interested in the project development that are going on in the Ennis area, and of course, the Ennis city. And, you know, I have some comments here, and some, that I'd like to bring up... And, you know, I have some comments here and some that I'd like to bring up that as we're dancing around the fire here.
Yeah, you hang on just a second until Alex finishes up.
Sure.
And then we'll get, we will get back to you. Okay, Alex, go ahead and finish.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, the concept that I thought would be beneficial to just have some ice breaking conversation with you all would be that I think it's important that we pay attention in these times we're into looking at if we can improve, if we need to improve our basically the way that we're recognizing capacities on water and sewage. How much are we already vetted that are required to provide service relative to what might be remaining? That's going to be a really important number to start figuring out. With annexation, it's been a while. It might behoove the town to crack open the Montana code and reevaluate those key sections. And I brought a copy of it today. I can point them out to you if you'd like. I want to encourage the town to be able to take its time to provide the answer that is the proper answer for someone. So you don't just jump on the boat when somebody says, hey, we're not going to your door if we come in, you know? You need to take the time to be thoughtful and intentional about the response so the town doesn't get overextended. I don't mean to sound patronizing at all. I just haven't had a thought to speak frankly and candidly about these types of matters. And it turns out that this sheet I printed off here, I was in a hurry, that's why I was late. But I printed off the wrong one. The one that I was going to get to is three twenty-eight, not three twenty-six. But what it says is a really important thing. This is a piece of knowledge that's just good to be aware of. That on administrative rules of Montana and DEQ level here. If a property and it's within 500 feet of existing public water and sewer, if they want to come in and say they've never been developed yet, and they want to put a septic system in a well, and they don't already have an approval by DEQ for a septic system, they actually have to communicate with the manager of the public system and ask, will you serve? Do you have capacity to serve? If the town or the public system, it's not always a town. That's really a designation based on number of users on the system. So they can be in unincorporated areas as well. They're still called public systems. But if the system has that capacity available and you say, yes, we can serve, then that landlord is technically required to abide and plan to do those connections. The only caveat that they can't, that they have to not have to do it is if they can provide engineered documentation that the cost to develop to the public system's connection requirement is three or more times as expensive as it would be to install a conventional system. So for instance, if I own a property roughly near vicinity and it's just been sitting here idle and I don't have a DEQ approval and I want to come for the septic system. And if I'm located anywhere from 500 feet or closer to your system, I would have to connect to it.
I think it's actually 1.5 because we had a failing septic system right over by the laundromat that DEQ won't even issue them a septic or a new septic within, and I think it's a mile and a half. It might, that might be, but if it's within, they won't even issue you a septic tank. If you're within so much, I don't think, I think it's a little more than 500 feet, but I wanted to say Kelly said a mile and a half on that.
Well, there are a bunch of different little nuances involved. But there's definitely one that's pretty awful, which is 500 feet. I was just looking at it today. I just printed off the wrong one. But I wanted to mention this because I am seeing an uptick in interest. We're getting a lot of calls from out of towners and people from even out of state who look into that property. And they're really attracted to this area, particularly around Ennis because it's the only town around with, you know, some services that they might want to be out of remote, not too remote. And there just is not that large of an inventory of available properties around. So I think there's going to be quite a few instances of this type of stuff come across your tables.
This parcel right here, so if they were to divide it up, what is a minimum requirement for area that you would have to have if we were to say no to them annexing in for a septic?
For a conventional level septic. You know, the rule of thumb has changed. It used to be that roughly an acre. However, that's not very practical anymore because just a few years ago, there were some changes to the DEQ rules. And for instance, there's a few things that they used to let overlap off of your property boundaries onto someone else's. But now they're requiring these to be maintained on your property. The first one is called well isolation zone. You're required to have a 100-foot radius well isolation zone. And it used to be that people can put their well right on their boundary and that zone would overlap on their neighbors and then it would almost like create a situation where their neighbors couldn't put a house there. The legislators took that away. They said that's basically like takings, unintentional, but it happens that way. So you have to be able to maintain a well isolation zone on your property. And then if you have a septic system with a tank and a drainage field, there's this portion of it called the mixing zone, which is an area that's anticipated through the life, projected life of the system that's basically mixing the affluent underground. And they used to allow mixing zones to extend off the boundary of a property. But now, those all have to be contained on your property. Unless you can secure an easement in advance from your neighbor. So it takes quite a bit larger size now. It's not, I mean, it's not that large, but you know how hard the day is where it was easy to set it up on one acre lot? Now, I think you'd be looking more at, you know, acre and a half on that small side, up to like three acres, depending on slope and the type of soils.
Because you'd have to have your well and your septic so they don't mix.
Yep, yep. And then you still have your stormwater requirement from DEQ. So, anyway, it's challenging. All the low hanging fruit has generally been picked. And what's left are troublesome, challenging development options a lot of times. So if somebody is next to or in close enough proximity to a public water or sewer system, it will trigger their connection. I think it's really an important thing to not wait until it's too late, but to get a good grip on your current capacities. How much you already have committed to and how much you have left. And then really think about that with regards to your zoning. Because different types of zonings with different permitted uses and densities, there's an implication that if you zone it as such, that you've evaluated these types of availability of these services.
So we can go through each zoning district and say, there's this many acres here and we're allowed to have this many hookups or whatever? We can figure out how many hookups we are saying we can service in our current town?
Yeah, I think it's important to start with what you're already serving and make sure that you're keen and aware of your current demand. And then take a look at what your systems can provide. Basically, you subtract to your, you fill up your these capacities on it. So that's a very important thing for you to determine where you want to intentionally adopt zones.
I see where a lot of towns back east and Midwest and whatnot, they require you, require you to have your septic drain once a year, no matter what. So that you don't have any expansion going into the neighbors.
That's a good idea.
Well, it's been working out pretty good. I know one place back east, they have it on your taxes. You have to take that certification. You had it drained into the taxing at the end of the year. And if you have, if you didn't have a drain, you're going to be subject to a huge fine.
Oh, wow.
Because the houses are so close.
So again, so an assessment of our current capacity, what we're already obligated to serve within town? And then, and then coming up to what we could further serve before we could annex anybody in is your recommendation? And so I guess that would be, yeah, do we do an assessment of what we already have? I mean, that would be a town, that would be an agenda item and...
Sometimes somebody will hire some...
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. It probably should be an agenda item. And I think, you know, through the water and sewer enterprise, I mean, we can look back to see when the last time that was done.
I think it's something that needs to be updated.
And then with this, you know, accelerated, you know, development, although, you know...
An example is the town of Sherwin is presently doing it right now. They're working with a company over there in engineering projects. Basically doing all the crunching at it and they're, they're civil engineers and they, that's what they're good at.
Yeah.
I would encourage some, a study like that to be done professionally.
Okay, and we should put that on the agenda and just get it done. So then that way, we're not pulling any developments up or whatever. And so we have those, you know, knowledge and power so we know exactly which choices.
Maybe we could use cushion trail and since they're doing a master plan already and kind of, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a good possibility that we could have that as an add-on and maybe as part of the master plan.
Yeah, we definitely can look at.
And maybe we can lean on those folks as well too, as far as some other items on here since they're already doing.
The only reason I would look at Great West is just because they're familiarity with the town. They are...
Oh, sure. Yeah, they're, I think they put this, they put the system in, so they should know what it's doing.
We already have some money that they did for that kind of stuff.
They've got quite a bit of funds over there.
I think the water and sewer enterprise fund is, yes, I think, they could go without a budget amendment.
They could pay for it, right?
Yeah, they're very healthy.
I think there's probably enough.
You think?
Yeah, I think, I think it's just...
Already budgeted, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, because, okay, all right.
So the challenge is with this project here, they're pretty much ready to submit. I was asked two weeks ago by them, do they should submit their application to the town or the county? And the first step is annexation and rezoning that property right there. I mean, they could come into you tomorrow. That's how quick this, they're ready to do some process. And I'm not able to answer that question because I haven't worked enough with you and I don't really know what your annexation methods are and things like that. So I do appreciate giving a chance to just chat with you. In my opinion, annexation is typically a town matter. And I would think that that application would come directly to you. I think that if they wanted to do a rezoning, that's a zoning map amendment. Usually, what I've seen is that a board reviews such a matter, the board's recommendation to be decision makers.
Yeah, that's a, and I think in our current thing that goes to our zoning commission. And then that, and then that recommendation gets forwarded on to the town council.
Okay, so you do have a zoning commission?
We do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, her first obligation should be to the north forty because we annexed that in.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, they're paying for the sewer work. But they, they are first. And they, you should include everything that's going to be on there before you go spreading yourself outside of another area, period. They have number one priority.
Yeah, yeah. They, they're already an obligation.
Yeah, it's an obligation and that's to the, the end of it. Not, not just because we're building in the beginning. It's for the entire north forty. Then after that, if you have room or you can help somebody, that's another story. But right now, your main obligation is to the north forty for its entirety.
Yeah, so it might be important to develop some policy because there are going to be some requests that are coming in. That's, just what I was thinking. The third step of that would end up being subdivision process. And that process is pretty clear, how we work that out.
Alex, you had mentioned water rights. Was that relevant to this parcel?
You know, it may or may not be. I hesitate to speak about any specifics because, you know, you don't want to cross certain lines inappropriately.
Sure. Well, that's, that's the, I mean, it sounds like we have plenty of septic capacity, but water capacity being more the question of whether we could give these guys water.
That's very well, could be a real key element of that conversation that you'll be having with them. That's really just what I wanted to touch base with you. Thank you, Blake, for the conversation this morning and thank you also.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, we can see some of these meetings again too. Just the clarity helps a lot because...
Thank you so much for being willing to help us because we're leaning, how about you're doing the heavy lifting. And we really appreciate it. And I think the town needs to get itself in a position where these things are happening that we may need to expand the position as our, is retiring and maybe talk about expanding that position with some credentials and stuff like that. So it's not just leaning on the county, but they can also work together. And so we can have a good relationship there and so you can have a counterpart here at the town. Did we want to get Matt and his comments?
Yeah, Matt, if you want to go ahead now, you're free to go.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I'm a, oh, I'm over in Bozeman, so pardon me for being the big city guy trying to intervene or discuss things from, you know, the big city to the small town. I do spend a lot of time in Ennis and, you know, Montana is my home. I've been around here for the past 25 plus years. But I'm also, you know, vested and involved with, you know, development projects throughout the area. And, you know, pertaining to a few things that I've taken notes on for the project with North Forty, you know, you guys were just touching on entitlement in that, you know, your obligation is to provide service to a unapproved subdivision, major subdivision for that matter. Now, there are some things that are being brought up by some other third parties as far as densities and, and heights. And, you know, we've, and Alex has been very good with discussing variances and PUD approaches and things like that, which, you know, each individual party that is looking to develop those properties that are currently available by Josh in North Forty. You know, one thing that I've seen with the town of Ennis as far as growth, and you guys were touching on a few things, septic tanks, water rights. I think it's really important to, you know, use some of these other towns. You know, I know, you know, obviously, you know, Madison County behaves a lot different than Galton County. And poor Galton County is getting hammered on by growth. But, you know, the big question that a lot of people are concerned for, especially when it comes to utility is that, you know, you guys have a finite capacity and there's going to come to a point that you're just never going, you're not going to be able to grow any more than you have. Now, my thoughts are, especially when, you know, talking about apartment buildings and raising the density requirements. You know, when, when you look at a proposal for more beds, and I think, you know, what Joe Finley and his team... and I think, you know, what Joe Finley and his team have proposed, you know, it doesn't sound like they're trying to build a bunch of, you know, 12,000 square foot, or excuse me, 1,200 square foot units where there's going to be five or six people stuffed in those things. They're looking more at a scaled down version of one, maybe two or three people in a unit. Now, what kind of capacity would, what kind of use would that create for the current capacity? Or a gallons per day usage? I think that's one thing that needs to be asked from an engineering standpoint and for you guys to consider. Now, there was also another mention of another location for a, an apartment complex or some kind of high-density development going on. And I'm looking at your zoning map right now and I don't see any other property that could accommodate in Ennis. Could you please elaborate where that might be and whether or not they could get capacity? You guys are discussing a 12-unit per acre new zoning district, for example. You know, well, where is that? I, you know, I know Ennis very well and I guess I'm a little, you know, I'm scratching my head as to like, well, if you, if you don't have property that's annexed currently and your obligations are to serve the developments that are currently there to be served, then, you know, I guess where is this going to go? And I, you know, because I think really density is the big player here. And as much as you guys, you know, have such a small footprint as a town standpoint and a utility standpoint, you know, if Ennis continues to grow and these developers start developing these ranches outside of town, those are all going to be mostly on well and septic. And so that's raw 101. So anyhow, I just wanted to interject. I'm sorry, I rambled for a second there. But, you know, you know, there are a few questions that I have when it comes to that capacity. Where are the high-density places are going to be? And I figure, you know, at least raise those concerns. Because I'm just, I'm a private citizen here and I'm generally interested in Ennis. And I'm just curious to know how, you know, you guys plan to grow.
So Matt, if I can interject, in our zoning proposal on the high-density residential areas and what we are proposing are actually, there are inconsistencies in our current zoning map and those were addressing. So for instance, on Hubel Street, we have the Valley Housing Complex that currently is non-conforming to town density. So that high, that residential high density was only to address those areas. And there's actually parts of the North Forty that fall under that too, with some lots that are smaller than the 5,400 square feet required. And so it was more so that designation was more trying to clear up those inconsistencies as opposed to planning for more high density. So it was just to, yeah, clear those up. Because our zoning map doesn't always overlay properly. Like we have some areas that are zoned, I believe it's medium density, and they need, you know, a half acre. And currently, those lots are only a quarter of an acre. So if their house burns down, according to our zoning, they're not allowed to rebuild. So that was the adjustments in the proposed zoning that we're taking on. It's not that we're planning on for large, high-density areas. So, and one of our current things of how we're going to grow, the town of Ennis is currently, we have contracted for, with funds from the Big Sky Trust Fund and Montana Main Street and funds here from Ennis to do a master plan for Ennis. And that's actually, those meetings should be starting here shortly, I would hope. So we have a firm that's going to help us develop a master plan.
Okay, so one other question I might have for you and obviously the rest of the council, you know, when we start looking at, you know, like a high-density residential project on Hubel Street where, you know, was non-conforming, but you guys are, you know, trying to work with those people best you can. You know, where does the parking end of things lie? I mean, you know, if you've got houses that are basically stacked up, you know, and they're a three-bedroom, you know, I've seen some very nice three-bedroom, three-story townhomes that, you know, maybe lots, one or two vehicles. How have you guys addressed the parking issue when it comes to that kind of density?
And that's something we'll have to take a look at through our master planning process. Currently, we do have parking requirements in there. And so that's how that has been addressed, is our current parking requirements through our zoning. But, you know, we're working through this. And that's where I think that master planning and the zoning stuff is, the zoning update is all a work in progress and all of those issues we are going to have to take into consideration.
Sure. Yeah, that's totally understandable. You know, I know that you guys are going through the growing pains just like everybody else is and I appreciate your patience with, you know, the inundation of people that are wanting to move to these areas. I, you know, I mean, just on a side note, I know going through with the upper management. You know, and, you know, I have some very good friends that are very dependent upon the reliability of that river, you know, being a place to gather people good time, be it fishing or floating or whatever. But you think about the tourism dollars that have really, you know, come into that community and how much of a debate of that is. And when you start thinking about growth and annexing more property and what kind of capacities you have, you know, those are presenting some very difficult questions for you guys. And, you know, obviously you don't have the manpower. And if, you know, Art's going to be leaving you guys, I, you know, that's a big void and there's some big shoes to fill to try to, you know, successfully plan this.
Yeah. Well, and it also, you know, there are, you know, planning appropriately is really important because you don't want to end up being a community that has, doesn't annex and doesn't associate, or, yeah, doesn't annex it. And then you're forced with like your community similar to Belgrade where they have all the outside subdivisions. Those folks still use the infrastructure of Belgrade, but yet they don't pay for it. So there's finding a balance. And you're right, these are growing pains. And I think, I mean, it sounded like my colleagues tonight are, you know, willing to do an assessment on our water and sewer system capacity and stuff like that. And that is why we are engaging in that master planning process.
Now, Lisa and the rest of the council have a more question and you guys have kind of touched on it when you were, you know, all three of these agenda items, you know, pertain to putting a lot of potential traffic into a small space. And, you know, looking at the North Forty, currently there are one, two, three, four ingress and egresses onto 287 and, well, 287, you go or between the city and you can also go out to Cameron, that area. You know, when you, I know that 70-acre project rather well and I was waiting for some floodplain mapping to be finished before it got snatched up. But, you know, the problem that we looked at that property was that you have some serious ingress and egress issues, you know, when it comes to creating some town density on that property. Now, I think it's very beautiful and offers a lot of value to the town. What have you guys thought about when it comes to DOT approvals and things like that? And Josh, if you're still on the call, you can intervene on something like that and how difficult it is to deal with the Department of Transportation when it comes to flow onto, you know, some of these highways.
Yeah, well.
Sorry, go ahead, Josh.
So I was just going to say, you know, when we were doing our development, they already had five approaches submitted from MDT. And all we wanted to do is one of them, or move two of them and do away with three of them. And they would not let us, allow us to do that. The fact that they really made us limited down to one at Lower Lane. And that process was, you know, about a year and a half of kind of back and forth with MDT. And, you know, a lot of issues that still aren't completely resolved. So it's, it's a big challenge, you know, to access, especially off of the US highway.
And if I can add something to that, I did talk to Commissioner Hart and he did say that you can only have so many accesses off of a highway in so many feet. So, you know, we have Lower Lane and then you would try to do one on Landing Lane, but that would be too many and you wouldn't have enough room in between the next road north, which is Mountain View.
Regardless of all of that, sorry to interrupt, none of the government bodies have anything to do with that. That's all MDT on all of those.
Well, that's what Josh was just saying, and I think to Matt's point, is that that's another component to be taken into consideration. But I think of course, MDT, when we're talking about those things, are going to have to be involved in the conversation. And I mean, so, so, yeah, there is lots of stuff to talk about and a lot of issues to contemplate. And hopefully, through the master planning process, we'll maybe get to address some of those. So I encourage people to participate in, when those community meetings happen, is to come and to take that and be an active participant because this is a community conversation and probably one we probably should have had a long while ago. But we're at where we're at and we're going forward. And so, yeah, so please participate when they come up.
Hey, that's it.
Thank you for all your interest. We appreciate it.